Ready to go live?
Thank you very much. We are at the time for public expression. Again, if anyone wishes to address us with your questions, concerns, or suggestions, now would be the time to do so on items that are not on this evening's agenda. Do we have anyone that wishes to address us? Lindsay?
Let's see, one moment. If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press star nine. When it is your turn to speak, you will be notified that the host is inviting you to participate, and then you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you are participating on YouTube, please submit your comments now. And note that when submitting comments on YouTube, you need to write public comment prior to your message if you would like it to be read into the record. And I'm going to give everyone about 15 seconds.
Sure.
I'm seeing no public comments for open time.
Which case, we shall close the the public, public comment period and turn to the consent calendar. We have, how many items do we have? We have five items on the consent calendar under four. No, we have six, which will be handled with a single motion after public comment with regard to these items. First, does anyone wish to have one or more of the items held? I see none. I would like to hold item C, 4C Downtown Business Improvement District. Seeing no others, their public comment with regard to these items will be handled with this single motion with the exception of item C.
Once again, if you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, you'll press star nine. This will be on agenda items for the consent calendar. And if you're on YouTube, please go ahead and start submitting your comments now. I see no public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and we'll close public. And I'll ask for a motion with regard to the items other than C, 4C.
I move approval of the consent calendar other than item 4C.
Thank you.
Second?
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I matter carries five zero. I've asked for item 4C Downtown Business Improvement District Annual Review to be held simply because I think particularly in these difficult times, it merits a comment of praise with regard to what BID has done, particularly with regard to the downtown dining under the lights Thursday and Friday nights. I think it's been a complete success. Some 33 restaurants have participated with a partial closure of C, excuse me, of Fourth Street. And I know a number of people, including yours truly, and I suspect other council members as well, have certainly enjoyed that opportunity. I know it's been very helpful to our restaurants, those that are participating, vast majority of our total restaurants in San Rafael. And it's been a very, very difficult period of time for a lot of businesses, but certainly to include our restaurants. So it's, it's working out, I think, quite well. And the BID Business Improvement District has been just absolutely instrumental in, in making this a success. So I just wanted to pull the item just to say thank you to the bid on behalf of the community. I have nothing beyond a review. I can accept like, like what they've done. It's in the staff report, but I have no other comments. And I'll ask if anyone from council has comment on this item and then go to public. Seeing none, any public comments with regard to this item?
Again, if you are listening in on the telephone and you wish to provide public comment on this item, please press star nine now. And if you're on YouTube, just go ahead and start submitting your comments. And I'm going to ask for about 15 seconds to provide people some time. I see no public comments.
Thank you. We'll close public and ask for a motion with regard to item 4C.
I'll move, I'll move passage of item 4C, but in doing so, I just want to second the mayor's comments and express my support for not only the BID, but each of its constituent members for the very difficult times they've been navigating these last few months, and certainly difficult times ahead. I'm glad that the BID and the BID Board are proving to be such able stewards in this tough time.
Yeah, good, good point. Is there a second?
I'm delighted to second the motion as well as the sentiments expressed by both councilmember McCullough and the mayor.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I matter carries five zero. Now turn to special presentations. And that sounds like Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'm going to kick this one off. We're very excited to have this item on the agenda tonight. We're also hopeful that the video works okay, but mostly we're excited about having it on the agenda tonight. It's a, it's been a major accomplishment to complete the Public Safety Center in addition to Fire Station 52, which is the one kind of near Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, and Third Street, and 57 up by the Marin County Civic Center. Really decades in the making. I didn't quite realize how long ago these projects had been started until recently. And they've, it's been so long that the community's been trying to get these projects done. And we wanted to have a big party for the completion of the Public Safety Center, but we can't do that from a COVID perspective. So I'm going to turn it over to Bill Guerin, who oversaw a commemoration video, which is our attempt to package a party into about 12 minutes of video. So hopefully it works okay, and I'll turn it over to Bill to tell you a little bit more about it.
And I would certainly show myself, but Lindsay won't let me do my video. So I just wanted to thank Michael Eisenmenger of the Community Media Center of Marin, who effectively, thank you Lindsay, volunteered to, to do this video on a very low budget, which is very thoughtful of them. Due to the coronavirus, coronavirus, we aren't able to do a dedication, you know, at the building itself. But the video, I think, shows a lot of the building itself and really tells a good story about what we've accomplished here. So I'll let that go forward and have the video. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Welcome, everyone, to the San Rafael Public Safety Center. We're delighted to be here to, for the opening and to inform the community as what has taken place to bring us to this point. So thank the community for everything you've done to bring the Public Safety Center to, to our fine city. Thank you. This facility is made possible by the contribution of a number of people beyond the community and certainly including the community. But it was constructed by Alton Construction, did an outstanding job, as you can tell when you come by and visit the facility. Mary McGrath, our architect, has done an outstanding job of making the facility not only beautiful, but also very functional for both our police and, and fires. So we're appreciative of them. Our city manager, Jim Schutz, and Assistant City Manager Christine Olivich, were instrumental in bringing everyone together to make this happen. So my hat's off and my appreciation to everyone that's contributed to this fine, fine facility. And who knows, another 100 years, we might, might all reconvene for another similar celebration. So thank you, everybody. Greatly appreciate everybody's contribution. Thank you.
A lot went into this. There was a strategic plan that was developed. We looked closely at the community to determine the best location for these facilities. And it takes time and commitment and then funding.
In 2003, Rod Gould, who was the city manager at the time, convinced the city council that we really needed to look at our public safety facilities because most of them were old, almost none of them were seismically safe, and most of them had outlived their usefulness as well.
The police were living, as you probably all know, in temporary buildings in the parking lot of the city hall. The fire station that this new public safety building replaces was built in 1917. And it was built up on this hill on this same street in order so that the horses would have lead to get them going because they would be going downhill towards downtown. So these facilities were way overdue.
And in 2004, city council, along with city manager, appointed a Critical Facilities Committee, which I co-chaired, to review the Group Four reports and of the recommendations, refine them and make local recommendations to the city council as to how to proceed. But one of the things that happened in that process was we discovered that the city had some pretty severe financial difficulties that would make it impossible to do anything.
And it was determined that there were structural deficits, actually, with being able to fund this appropriately, as well as maintaining levels of operation for city government. So at first you don't succeed, try, try again. We actually worked with the community on several measures, and the most recent obviously being Measure E, which was successful. But my hat's off to the community for supporting us so strongly in the way they did. And I'm prideful that we actually got it completed really on time and on budget. These really serve the community in an important way. And you think about what public safety does, and you're seeing that more now on the news as we're in the midst of another fire siege.
And emergencies, as we know, they keep multiplying. We thought it was just earthquakes and maybe fires and maybe floods, and now it's epidemics. So it's really going to help San Rafael to have an emergency operations center that is functional, no matter what of those kinds of emergency happens. And in the meanwhile, they can use it for training and education and what have you.
But it's important to recognize the value of not only the firefighters and the police officers that day in and day out, put their lives on, on the line for others, but the facilities that they work in. And it's important that those facilities are, are modern, they're safe, and they're functional.
So it was a constant working to keep the funding, keeping within our budget, but getting the highest quality, working with the fire department and the police department. They knew that this was going to be the facility they'd have to live with for decades to come. And so there was a lot of emphasis on high quality, low maintenance. And we continually strived for that from the beginning to the end. One of the important things about this, all three projects, is that they were designed with sustainable elements that will result in energy savings for years to come for the city.
The Public Safety Center brings together really the entire police department under one roof, as well as our dispatch center, and for the first time provides the community with an emergency operations center, which is really important as we've come to realize in the days of both the impacts we're seeing of climate change and the pandemic, but having a centralized location that's in a safe and secure facility that you can operate from is just essential.
The Public Safety Center, to me, is an exciting opportunity to co-locate resources in a way that I have never seen resources co-located in my career in the fire service. We have our Office of Emergency Services staff, we have our Fire Prevention Bureau staff, we have our Code Enforcement staff, our administrative staff, and our suppression staff here with Station 51, all located in one building. And so that affords some conveniences, some efficiencies. The design of this facility really wanted to ensure that everything was co-located and everyone had an opportunity to interact closely and in close proximity to one another. And then to add to that now, the fact that we're able to partner with our law enforcement officials just literally across the hall, that's huge. We've already had ample opportunities to, to discuss some very important things affecting community and public safety. I think there's just so many opportunities ahead that having this Public Safety Center constructed in the manner that it was, it affords us now to hopefully build something that will be the model for other agencies in public safety to emulate moving forward.
Santa Fe Police, Santa Fe Police?
I'm Diana Bishop. I'm the chief of police here in San Rafael. Started here when we were in the basement of City Hall as a police department and not all under one roof. So we are so honored and excited to have had Measure E passed so we can be under this roof, this beautiful roof, with our public safety friends, the fire department. So what this means to me personally is that all my people are under one roof, and we work better that way. What I really love, and you probably see the lobby here, is it's really big. And people come in and they need our help all the time. In our old lobby, it was very small. There was no privacy, and it was really difficult to have hard conversations in there. We have interview rooms off the lobby now and tons of space where people can talk to an officer about things that they probably didn't wake up that morning thinking they needed to talk about to a stranger or two. So I love being in the building with the fire department. I've gone over and bugged the fire chief many times already in his office. And we are, it's, this is like a hallmark of this community now. This building fits in well with the neighborhood. It's, it looks like it, it has been here a long time, but it's so state of the art. And we are thankful for everything that was given to us by our community to be in this great facility.
So one of the most exciting parts of all three projects, Station 52, 57, and the Public Safety Facility, is that they were all designed to fit in with a particular neighborhood. Station 57 is in the shadow of Frank Lloyd Wright's great Civic Center project. And 52 aligns with the neighborhood around, on second. And then this facility, a lot of emphasis went into making it blend in with downtown, but also reflect current times.
We have the former face of Station 51 right out and above the apparatus doors here at the new Station 51 here at the Public Safety Center. We've got our bell that's sitting just outside that door as well. But if you come into the main lobby area, the previous apparatus doors that existed at Station 51 for so many years are right there on display in the center hallway, and that's, that's major. There's very few instances where I've seen things that were able to be incorporated from a previous construction, decades old, into the modern day construction. And so again, that's just a testament to trying to maintain the tradition of the organization and the community, but also factor those things into the design and appearance of the building as it stands right now.
Obviously, these buildings were important to the city of San Rafael. And see, now you can see the facilities, how beautiful they are. They're not only beautiful, but they're functional. For instance, we're going to point out with a fire in that door here is how quick they open up and lets the fire department get out as quick as possible. And this is just how helps the fire department get where they need to be and serve and protect our community.
It has been open a little while now, all three facilities. And I still feel whenever I walk past them that I need to pinch myself and make sure I'm not dreaming because it's been so much hard work and many years and strategic planning and problem solving to get to where we are today. And I just couldn't be prouder of these beautiful buildings. It's definitely going to be one of the highlights of my career because I absolutely feel that 100 years from now, there's still going to be women and men of our public safety departments responding out of these buildings to help the San Rafael community.
One of the things that I'm most proud of in being involved with these projects is being able to help create these state of the art facilities that really support our public safety professionals, our firefighters and police officers, and, and our other public safety professionals get to live and work in these state of the art facilities that really support the state of the art work and, and that they do in the community every day. And it is really a wonderful thing to be able to support them and their work with the community.
We're also planning for the future. We're also delivering on our promise of making a safer San Rafael. I am convinced that today, the city of San Rafael, the residents of San Rafael, are stronger and more prepared for any emergency than they've ever been before.
I don't know that I can do any better than what other people have done in describing this very impressive structure. But I will say that it's a real testament to the perseverance of our community that this got done in the first place. And so now, fast forward from the election in 2013, where the measure passed, to now 2020, the facility is built, two other brand new fire stations have been built, and money has been set aside to do remodels at other fire stations. We now have something the community can not only be proud of, but can be sure is going to provide assistance for us in times of emergency. Had we not come together to create this beautiful edifice, we would have asked, had that emergency happened, why couldn't we summon the will to make it occur? And I'm just grateful that we were able to do so. Thanks again for providing a great facility for San Rafael.
Well, let me, let me thank you, Bill, certainly for putting this together. It's, I think it warms, warms all of our hearts that it's at, at the place that it is. And maybe to comment just for a second that we had a wonderful committee, Facilities Committee. Andrew McCullough was on that committee. I, I was there as well. But members of the community, the fire chief, police chief, and members of the association, working together along with Jim and his staff to make this a reality for, for all of us. You know, the architecture, I think, is special, and each of the three that have been made reference to ground up are unique. And certainly Mary McGrath, who was an award winner as the architect of 57, which is out at Civic Center. But I think they're all special in many ways. And I was most pleased to see that Mary had received from her peers recognition for the outstanding job that she did to make it, make it a reality. And I'll just share with you, it's, it's kind of looking back, if you will, how these things somehow materialize or get started. In any case, I was having a meeting with the former city manager Nancy McCall, and we were talking about the extension of, of our sales tax measure of a half a percent. And, and my basic question of her was, after living through discussion after discussion after discussion about what we're going to do with the fire station. And in fact, when I first ran for city council in 1996, that was one of my, one of my, my platforms, if you will. Well, nothing happened, and finally I find myself as mayor, talking with Nancy about this extension. And said, so how much did the last, or the prior sales tax measure, when it went out to the community, what did it pass by? And I don't recall the exact percent, but let's call it 60, 60 some percent. And so it required 50% if we're going to do something in addition to that. So I figured, well, what the hell, we'll just add another quarter percent and see what happens. And went out to the community with that. And that, once again, the community stepped up and voted in favor of that additional quarter percent, which has provided some 80 million bucks by way of bonding the sales tax, future sales tax receipts. So it became a reality. And you know, it's just sort of one of those casual conversations that sometimes works even better than I expected. You see the result, and it's pretty, it's, 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 it's something I, I think I'm most, most pleased about. I think we all are in our own separate ways that it became a reality after all those years because the other facilities were just sorely in need of the repairs and the upgrade that we've now provided. So hats off to everybody that's been involved in this. But in particular, once again, in particular, the community that said, okay, we think you're right. We'll accept your view on this and we'll go forward with it. And, and without the community, it wouldn't have happened. So I certainly want to thank, first and perhaps foremost, the community for recognizing the need and stepping up once again to support what had been suggested, recommended. So it's kind of, kind of heartwarming to see it in final, final stage, final completion. Thanks to everybody that was involved, certainly. And thanks once again for putting the, you know, the video together. It's unfortunate we couldn't, as Jim mentioned, have had a, a public gathering. That would have been great fun in the bays and the conference rooms and tours, et cetera, et cetera. But that's unfortunately not reality these days. But we think that, I think the satisfaction certainly comes from having it in place to better serve their community and, and to recognize the community for stepping up once again. So want to thank everybody for being involved in this. And so thank you for putting the video together. It'll be fun to watch again. Thank you. So with that, Jim, I don't know if there are other comments or further items that, I mean, within this item we need to touch on or not, but I'll leave it up to you.
I'm not sure if you, if there are any public comment, if you want to take public comment. I just wanted to say two things. One is that if you ask Bill Guerin to put together a video, he'll make sure he's not in it. So I wanted to acknowledge Bill's role, as you did as well. He was fantastic as, as the lead of the project, working with Christine Olivich on it. Those two were fantastic. And I think you, there's been at least four city managers involved at different points of the way. So I'm just so pleased that along with this council, this is the council that brought it across the finish line, and I was just pleased to be a part of it. So thank you again.
And thank you. And you're right in mentioning Bill specifically, as he was outstanding, bringing this to fruition, as the others that I mentioned, including certainly Andrew sitting on the committee. It was a good effort. It was one of those, quite frankly, committees that worked perfectly. And the outcome, I can't, can't applaud that group enough. Andrew made mention of on time, on budget. Yep, we told the community this is what we're going to do, and we did. So thanks to everybody that's involved. And with that, you know, further comments with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Mayor Phillips?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I got ahead of myself. Any public comments with regard to this, this agenda item?
Thank you. If you are participating by telephone, please go ahead and press star nine now if you would like to provide public comments. And if you're participating on YouTube, please go ahead and insert your comments now. I see no public comments.
Okay, we'll close public and, and move on to item 6A, Year-end Financial Statements and Related Audit Report. Nating, that must be you.
It is me, yes.
Welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight I'll be sharing the fiscal year 1920 audit results with you, which have also been discussed and reviewed by the Finance Committee members. Before jumping into the key highlights of the audit, I'd like to thank our finance team for their focus and dedication in completing these audits, especially during these challenging times. Normally, the auditors are out at our office pulling files and asking us questions real time. And this year, it was a little bit different. We were scanning several, I'd say hundreds of documents to them. They were having to sort through them all, and certainly we exchanged hundreds of emails in which normally we would have done it in person. That said, we still met our timeline goal, which was impressive as it's already tight. This year, I would like to thank our principal accountant, Sean Plate, who took a leadership role and did a fantastic job during the audit. And of course, the other departments that cross collaborated with us. And lastly, our auditors, Mason Associates, for completing thorough audits of all of our funds. A few main highlights. The city's general fund balance, not including general plan activity, which is consolidated in the audit, decreased by $2.3 million. This is different from the projection that we presented to you on June 15th, which estimated losses of $2.9 million. In order to offset the deficit, the city did use all of its unassigned funds that had been accumulated from prior years and $100,000 of the emergency reserve. As a result of the losses, the city faced this As a result of the losses the city faced this year, it was unable to meet its emergency reserve policy and therefore will need to replenish the reserve for the hundred thousand dollars that we used and an additional one hundred forty-two thousand dollars, which would have been required under the policy. The city has depleted all one-time unassigned funds, so that balance is gone. And similar to last year, the single audit, which is the federal grants audit, is scheduled for completion in December. So I'll be bringing that back to you separately. And then lastly, we had a new audit this year, the Transportation Development Act audit, which provides funding assistance for eligible construction having to do pedestrian and bicycle capital projects. We had no major findings in any of the audits. Our auditor will go over their internal controls findings. And with that, I would like to turn your attention to Amy Mayer from Mason Associates. Amy is a tenured partner who rotated onto the city's audit this year and is here to present the auditor's perspective and results. So thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Nadine. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm going to share my screen so you don't have to stare at my face the whole time and share a short, uh, PowerPoint presentation. Let's see. There we go. And of course, this will be the evening of technical difficulties. There we go. Okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. So I am pleased to present the results of the audit, as Nadine mentioned. And, excuse me, an audit is an independent verification that the city's financial statements are materially correct or fairly present the financial position of the city's funds. So we opine on the city's basic financial statements, which include the major funds individually and non-major funds in aggregate. Major funds can be seen in the comprehensive annual financial report on pages thirty and thirty-six. Our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards. So as mentioned, we audit the city as a whole, which is, we audit the basic financial statements, which are contained in the city's comprehensive annual financial report. The comprehensive annual financial report is, has three main sections. You have an introductory section, basic financial statements in the middle, and statistics in the backside. So we audit that middle section, and that's what we opine on, are the basic financial statements. We also, um, excuse me, the CAFER, the comprehensive annual financial report also includes the component unit of the San Rafael sanitation district, which we do not audit. And as noted in our audit opinion, our opinion as it relates to the district is based solely on the report of the other auditors. We also audit, as mentioned, the child development program financial, financial report, the transportation development act program, and then the single audit. Again, that is, the single audit or federal programs is in audit, is in process. It has a different due date than the, than the CAFER, which is March thirty-first, but we do anticipate finishing that work in December. We also report on the city's calculation of its appropriations limit or GAN limit. So the results, the results of the audit, you can find those in the independent auditor's report in the CAFER on page one. And we have issued unmodified or clean opinions. It's called opinions. We use plural because there are multiple opinions in the report. We audit, again, major funds individually, non-majors in aggregate. And so our opinions do indicate that the, uh, fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with, excuse me, in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Or you see us refer to that as GAAP a lot of the times. So the, uh, an unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. So also included in the CAFER is management's discussion and analysis. Again, you can find that on page five. That's prepared by finance staff and discusses the significant activity of the fiscal year. It's a really good place to go to read that, that boiled down activity and summarization of everything that happened during the year for the city. As part of our audit, we also test internal controls of the city to verify that day-to-day practices are in line with approved policies and recorded in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that means on a sample basis, we trace transactions to source documents for areas including revenue, disbursements, payroll, capital assets, and long-term debt. And then we also test the year-end balances on the balance sheets and statements of net position. So from that work, if there are matters to report, they're included in our memorandum on internal control. So there are three possible categories, material weaknesses, which kind of self-explain themselves. I'll go to the third one, other matters. And then you have that middle bucket, which is the significant deficiencies. So they're not as, they don't elevate to the level of being material weakness, but a little more significant than another matter. So we do have, the, the results of that is included in a separate document that you have, the memorandum on internal control. We did have, uh, three significant deficiencies and five other matters. Now, of the other matters, that also includes upcoming, I'm sorry, I can't count today, two other matters and including, uh, upcoming governmental accounting standards board pronouncements, which ends up being the bulk of the, of the document, because there are a lot of upcoming pronouncements. Another document that you have in your packet is the required communications. That's, again, it's what it's, it is what it says it is. We're required to communicate certain matters to you, including any changes in accounting policies. The city had a couple of minor accounting policy changes relating to how it records accounts receivable related to parking sentations and an allocation of internal service fund eliminations. And then also, the city did implement a new governmental accounting standards board pronouncement number ninety-five, which what that statement did, it didn't affect the financial statements, but it defers the implementation of some upcoming GASB pronouncements. GASB recognized all of the, uh, problems with the pandemic and what that means on financial reporting. So allowed some deferral of, of those items. We had no unusual transactions, of course, other than the COVID, the potential impact of the pandemic. As you saw, it did have an impact on your emergency reserve. So there are those unknowns that still go on as things expand and contract on the, in the upcoming year. The report also includes some significant accounting estimates because of the financial statements are at that frozen period of time at June thirtieth of 2020. And so some of the financial statements, you, or excuse me, some of the balances are estimates at that moment. Significant ones, of course, include your pension and your OEB liabilities, because the actual results can vary as, because those are based on estimated amounts. We, we're happy to report we had no disagreements with management and no material adjustments or uncorrected statements that we need to report to you. The other report included in the packet is the results of the childcare audit. Now, we're calling this one a draft results because the state is running behind in its issuance of what's called a closeout letter that's needed to tie the financial statements to the state's records. It really does have to tie to the dollar to the state's records, or the, the report will get rejected for a dollar. And so, um, so that, that's why this is a draft. Once they get caught up, the city will receive that closeout letter, and hopefully there won't be any material adjustments. As noted in the staff report, if there is a material adjustment, then the report will be brought back, but we don't anticipate as such. So in the draft results of our work, we had no, uh, no compliance findings in our work, and we proposed to issue an unmodified or clean opinion. And, but we did have two current year findings in that report that are just related to financial, um, financial reporting. And that, those again are the repeat items from the citywide memorandum on internal control, because they're the ones that could potentially impact the childcare audit. Transportation Development Act report is another report that we, uh, issued this year or preparing, proposing to issue this year. It is only, Transportation Development Act audit is only required in the years that you spend the money. So you have these grants that come from Metropolitan Transportation Commission, usually for bike passes and things like that. And, um, again, we had no compliance findings, and we, we do have an unmodified or clean opinion on that report as well. And so with that, I stumbled over my last few words there, but with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Well, first of all, thank you for, uh, for the work you've done. That's, uh, what, about a thousand pages? It seemed like a thousand pages anyway. Maybe not quite that many, but quite a few.
When you nodded off when you're reading them, yes.
And, and the end result was certainly positive. And I think that's, uh, quite frankly, I think that's reflective of the excellent financial staff headed by Nadine that we, we have. And, uh, I was pleased that there were no material weaknesses in the internal control, uh, no significant adjustments, not a failing of yours, but rather, uh, the staff doing what they needed to do to fairly present the financial statements to, to us and certainly the readers of the financials. So I was pleased at, uh, with that outcome. I do have a question, just for my own clarification, because you went through it pretty quickly, but just so I understand. I wrote down no significant deficiencies, but then I think you said there might have been two.
There were.
Can you touch on those?
I can. There were three. I think that was when I was rattling off and rumbling over my own words. So yes, there were no, we have no material weaknesses to report. There were three significant deficiencies. Two were related to the documentation of review. So now, as an auditor, we want to be able to see, see that something's happening. And we couldn't see that some of the reviews that, that city staff is performing. We couldn't see documentation of that. And then the other was related to some cash collection procedures in the parking department. So those were collectively considered a significant deficiency, or, excuse me, significant deficiencies. And then the other items were what we call other matters, related to some, uh, housing activities report filing. And a strange one related to the treasurer's report frequency of reporting. There's a conflict in the government code. So we just want to make sure that city staff acknowledges the conflict and makes a decision on whether any changes in the reporting are necessary.
And this, of course, was through, uh, June, and it's now November, middle of November. So, uh, if it's appropriate, uh, we haven't discussed this, but if it's appropriate, Nadine, would you care to comment on those, uh, those, those quote deficiencies?
Absolutely, Mayor. So the first two deficiencies were indeed with the way that we documented our review. They were in regards to accounts payable and payroll. Payroll, we do document review when we review the batch. But when I review the audit to make sure that nobody has, you know, changed a number that they shouldn't be changing, so changed a compensation amount, um, because there are, our system is smaller, and so, um, our segregation of duties are not necessarily one hundred percent the way that we would love them to be. And that's okay, as long as we're reviewing the, um, input, which I do every pay period. But I never sign off on it. And so not signing off, you know, creates an issue for the auditors. So we have always, I've always looked at them, and so from July first to November, I've gone ahead and signed off on them. And then, um, the same thing with accounts payable. The accounting manager reviews all of that, but we just, she hasn't been actually signing off on it. And, you know, that's really due to getting through things quickly so you can move on to the next thing and checking for the most appropriate and accurate items. And I have oversight that she's doing it, and, you know, people have oversight that I'm doing the, um, payroll audit review, but certainly we understand. And then the third item is in, uh, the parking department. And it seems that they have been, or at one point, and I'm not sure how often this happens, but I don't think it happens often, and now we are going to take measures of training, and it could also be disciplinary action to ensure that it no longer happens. But they would, you know, someone would jump off on a break, and instead of signing out of the computer, which has their login, the other person would take over, still logged in under employee A. So employee B was using employee A's login information for cashiering, and they should absolutely not be doing that. And so it's really just a training issue, and, um, if it's not followed, then some action.
It sounds like you've identified, Amy, a couple areas, uh, for improvement, which we appreciate. Obviously, we're in the, in the effort of making improvements each and every day and have highest regard for our finance department headed by Nadine. I think she's terrific, so I'm glad you're working together to improve what I suspect is, as a CPI, I sort of expect it to be, uh, uh, bulletproof, and, and I feel comfortable with the, the comments you've made with regard to, uh, areas we can improve upon. And, and I know Nadine takes that to heart, and clearly it's, it's Jim's, it's Jim's turf, but I follow it a little bit. So, uh, thank you for helping us, uh, improve that that we have, which is, I think, excellent already. And I hope you would concur. The other, the other point I, I have is, well, these are difficult times, and the community once again stepped up on measure R when we outlined where we were financially and looking over the next nine-year period with pension, quite frankly, is one of the, one of the hurdles we need to overcome. And also the impact on COVID, uh, impact on our businesses resulting from COVID, both significant, and this, the community once again stepped up and said, okay, we understand, um, the situation. And, um, with John's help, we were able to convince them, if you will, that this is the right thing to do. I mean, I frankly couldn't figure out another way to, to bridge almost four million dollars a year. And the community stepped up with everybody's help in that regard to, uh, say, okay, we get it. Uh, it's troubled times for everybody, but the community stepped up once again to say, okay, we're with you. And, uh, out of respect, particularly for our management team, did what I was hoping and we were hoping, uh, they would do to get us through this most difficult time. Our fund balance, uh, our, by our fund balance, I mean the general fund balance, the operating fund, you know, payroll for police and fire and everyone else, plus all the other operating expenses. We still have about a, uh, as I read the statement, correct me if I'm wrong, because I didn't do much in governmental accounting, so maybe I have it wrong. But as I read the governmental, or rather, the general fund balance at the end of June, of the June of this year, is nine point eight million, which is about twelve percent of our operating, uh, revenues. I look at the revenues rather than the expenses, but it's more than twelve, regardless of which one you look at. Excuse me, it's more than ten, regardless of which one you look at. And I, that was a goal that we set up to, boy, I don't know. John, maybe you remember, but it was probably five or six years ago, and adopted by the council as, as policy, and, and we're there. Now, that may very well drop down. I think everybody recognizes that this next year, next fiscal year. Because it's, again, it's doggone COVID, uh, no failing, I would suggest, to the cities, nor are the businesses within our city. It's just a tough economic time. But having said that, I still think that, uh, we're, we're in pretty solid financial position. We're trying to get ten with regard to the bonds, which double A rating. And so I think that's also a good sign. So I'm pretty comfortable with, speaking for myself now, I'm pretty comfortable that, uh, we've, we've gone at least part of the way through this, this most difficult period and, and still on, on solid footing for the community to know that, uh, we're, we're at a, a pretty good place, and with community's help, it's going to drop, it's going to drop down a little bit, with the community's help. I think we, uh, we as a city are in a strong financial position. And, and Nadine, uh, preparing the reports for us, us being city council, which of course are for the community as well, without any adjustments at the end of the year, it's greatly appreciated. We can rely upon what, what you present, you and your staff. So I think that's, uh, I think that's a good thing for our community. So keep up the good work. And, uh, once again, Amy, thanks for, uh, for bringing this to us. I understand it's a draft, but it'll be completed in short order without any change, is my expectation. That's why when Nadine and I talked about, yet I thought, rather than delay it further, because it is November, middle of November, uh, it would be appropriate to bring the city council so the council knows where we're at with regard to this past year. So thanks for allowing us to do so.
Yeah, so Mayor, all of the reports are ready for finalization, other than the childcare audit. We're, we just held them, so all of you can let us know if you had any changes that you wanted to make. But as soon as, uh, you review the resolution and approve, then we will finalize all other than the childcare audit.
So it gives, gives everybody a pretty good sense of where we ended up last year. And again, I don't expect it to change, but it does, it does, but I don't expect it to. And certainly not in a material way, I think it's fair to say. Other comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor Phillips, I just like, I realized I did not thank Nadine and her staff directly, and I wanted to do that in the public, because it was not a normal audit year, and yet they were able to make it feel like a rather normal audit year. They provided everything that we asked for along the way, which was very helpful. Because it was, it's a strange year, as we all keep saying, but think about remote auditing when you're not used to that. It's, it's unusual.
Well, thanks for adding that, uh, she hears that every day, I think, so, you know, what's one more compliment?
Right.
Thanks for doing so, because your independent perspective is, is, is important. So thanks for that. Other comments by council before we turn it to public? I see none. Uh, let's go to public comment on this item.
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press star nine now. When it's your turn to speak, you will be notified that the host is inviting you to participate, and you'll need to press star six to unmute. If you're participating on YouTube, please submit your comments now, and note that you do need to write public comment prior to submitting your comments and introduce yourself. I'm going to give it about fifteen seconds. I see no public comments.
Okay, uh, close public and come back, uh, for further comment, discussion, or perhaps a motion by council with regard to this item. John, why don't you make the motion, if you would, please?
Sure, absolutely. Let me pull that up here. I make the motion that we accept the report on the year-end financial statements and related audit reports.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Hi, I'm Eric Curie 50, and thanks, thanks once again, and thanks Nadine for the excellent job of getting us to this point. So with that, we shall now turn to the next item, which is B cannabis program adjustments. Danielle, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips. Good evening, council members. Tonight, I'm here to review some of the program recommendations for our pilot cannabis program that began in November 2018 for your consideration and approval tonight. Before I start, I just wanted to mention that all of the proposed recommendations have been previewed and preliminarily approved by our council ad hoc subcommittee. So to start, none of the proposed changes we're talking about tonight require any zoning work. These are really modifications to our resolution that outline what is allowed in our program. The goals of these changes are kind of four stated goals. The first one is to provide flexibility and improve business viability for existing small licensees. Two is to sync up the changes with new state law. We enacted this program in 2018 and over the course of the years, the state has modified some of its language, so we want to clean our language up to match. And then three, we are looking at considering our delivery license cap, moving from five licenses up to eight. If approved tonight, the three additional would be in the future to be determined and another licensing round. And then finally, we're going to be updating the title of this program. We're going to be removing the name pilot and we're going to be calling it our cannabis business operating, operator license program, so no longer a pilot. So let me start with the changes that really are aimed around the viability of our licensees and flexibility. The first area that we're proposing is allowing our existing manufacturers and delivery companies the ability to maintain or obtain, should they choose, a subordinate distribution license. This is a wholesale license that allows the business to basically conduct what many other businesses do, which is make their product and prepare it to go to market. Ideally, when the state set up its licensing structure, standalone distribution was a license classification. But in actuality, what we're seeing is very few businesses make it as a standalone distributor. And oftentimes, as within our program, they're coupled with another business. So what we're proposing is allowing our existing licensees that ability to obtain that subordinate license if they are in the proper zoning district and they choose to do that. Making this small, little nuanced change could improve our licensees margins by up to 15 to 25%. And when you're a small artisan business struggling to survive, that's pretty significant. The city of San Rafael does not have one active license holder that is a standalone distribution license. It is held in conjunction with another license. So it really does show us in the last two and a half years that it's a difficult license to hold individually. We are also making recommendations in the next tier around syncing up our license to new changing state law. And this particularly affects our manufacturers only. In the new state law, it allows our infusion manufacturers to register as an N or an S. And what that distinction means is really, an S is a smaller license type. It's got a lower volume cap. Our small license manufacturers typically fit into this category. So we want to afford our N license types the ability to do an N or an S depending on their volume and revenue. S license types are required to make no more than 1 million a year to be considered an S. So we wanted to sync up our regs to match that with the state. It also allows our small manufacturers the ability to use their, you know, manufacturing facility as a commercial kitchen, as you would see in many other businesses. So you are allowed to lease out your space to a licensed small manufacturer, one at a time, should you choose to, which really helps our small manufacturers increase their viability. And then finally, we are proposing to increase the license delivery cap, as I mentioned. Currently, we have all five of our delivery companies active and doing well within our program. They represent 96% of the cannabis tax revenue that we collect. And we are recommending that that number go to eight licensees, those three additional licenses to be determined at a future licensing recruitment date. In closing, all the recommendations were again previewed with the cannabis ad hoc subcommittee, but also discussed with our current licensees. Many of our licensees are struggling, just like every other small business right now during the pandemic and with the taxation rates that they have, both at the state and local level, as well as access to very little federal funding and programming in the event of COVID-19. This is just one small thing we can do to help them improve their viability. And with that, I'd like to stop and say thank you for listening to me go through these things. I know I have a lot that's written in the report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I also see that Simon, my trusted teammate, is on the call and he is also available for questions that you may have about the program. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you for your, your complete report. It covers a lot of the areas we might have inquiries about. And I'll ask first, council members, if there are any questions. Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah, Danielle, thanks for the excellent staff report and presentation. I have no qualms or reservations about what you're proposing. But I am curious, could you let us know how we're doing, well, how our businesses are doing on the sales front and how we, as a result, are doing on the tax collection front? I know that at least in the first two years, we were disappointed at the business levels. Are we seeing, and I'm most specifically interested in knowing whether there have been, during the pandemic, there's been an effect on the sale of cannabis in our community and therefore on our tax collections?
There has been a very positive impact, specifically within our delivery companies in particular. We've gone from averaging in 2019, a quarter with our delivery companies, tax remittance around 50,000 to 71,000 in a given quarter. And in 2020, amidst the pandemic, we're now looking at about 156,000 per quarter. So it's a pretty significant jump. The licensees that are struggling the most, to be quite honest, and we have actually lost a few, is within our small artisan manufacturers. They don't have the scaling ability that some of the larger manufacturers do and all the costs are the same. And so our ability to allow them to do some of those third-party things in, you know, in-house, arranging for testing, quarantining of product and getting it to retail will help them be a bit more competitive and hoping will improve their tax remittance. The way we've allocated license, majority of our licenses are in the license type that is struggling the hardest, which is manufacturing. The minority of licenses that are doing the strongest, we have the smallest amount, which is our delivery.
Thank you. Other questions? I see none. I have, I have two. Andrew asked on the sales tax revenue side. At one point in time, we were projecting, if you will, with a crystal ball, sales tax revenue was a million dollars and we're about a little over half at that level. So we're still not quite was, which was perhaps anticipated, but no one knew for sure. But related to that, I'm curious as to whether or not we have, either through our police department or other sources. How many non-licensed by us, how many non-licensed distributors do you think there are in San Rafael?
Are you talking about that come into San Rafael and deliver or that are actually located in San Rafael?
Both, actually.
We don't, to our knowledge, have any that are located in our city limits that are not licensed by us. We have had two enforcement inquiries. One was to a PO box and it was not within city limits and the other was a business had since closed. So they were old compliance calls, but we responded to both of those. And then I would say what the, the area we need to get a better handle on are outside coming in. And as part of our master fee schedule, you'll notice that we have an out-of-business cannabis registry where we're going to start to have those businesses be required to sign up with us and pay a fee. And through that, we're going to know who's coming in and we'll be able to then go for the sales tax remittance, which we are not getting from them now.
So that's an interesting point, and I must admit, I don't recall that provision, which I think is a good one that you suggested for those that are from the outside, as you've characterized, delivering within our, our city limits. It seems monitoring that is going to be a challenge. And to know who they are and how much and are they paying, paying quote us, what would be determined to be our fair share? How do we, how do we monitor that?
We work with the Bureau of Cannabis Control as enforcement agency and the California Department of Tax and Fee, both who are partners with us and helping audit where the point of sale and transaction takes place. We then also do our research on online delivery services who are offering their delivery services coming into Marin. So we try to triangulate it with both the regulatory agency and then kind of our research that we do in conjunction with our police department.
I have a follow-up question, but I'm going to leave it for Mary Beth. I can tell by her expression, she has, has a question.
Okay.
I know her well, and it'll be
Okay.
It'll be perhaps better stated than I might. Another broad question out of curiosity with your experience and particularly with the experience in San Rafael. I'm looking at Marin County cities in, and at one point in time, at least I said, I don't want San Rafael to become the only distribution hub in the county. It's personal and others, mayor man, agree with that. I don't know, but that's, that was my, one of my principal concerns. I know that, I think I know, I don't follow as closely as you do, but I think Fairfax has one, maybe two outlet, retail outlets. Having said that, I also think that there are some other communities in Marin County, other cities and towns that have rejected delivery and virtually all association with cannabis. Give me a quick update, if you would, please. And it's not, I apologize because it's not part of your report.
No, no, that's okay. I, I was anticipating this question.
Oh, thank you.
So, yeah, the city of Nevada actually has opened up their process. They're doing a different process where it's an RFP proposal process. They are not limiting delivery. It is unlimited delivery may apply. They also have manufacturing, distribution and cultivation. So they are currently moving through their RFP process and have actually extended it, the RFP period to the end of this month. So they are actively moving forward with a cannabis program in Nevada. Sausalito has indicated they're considering a storefront, but I don't know where they are. Those discussions seem pretty preliminary. And then we have Fairfax, who has the physical storefront and then, and then our, our program.
So my takeaway is, and you mentioned Nevada is in the process, but as of today, they're not permitting distribution as we are.
They have all their regulations set up to show it does permit it, but their approval process for issuing that license and permit is going on now. So they've taken the steps to create the path and now they're waiting for the applications and the decisions. So I anticipate that pretty soon.
That's to be seen yet. So we shall, you didn't mention the county, and I know there was at one point in time, and gosh, this was
Yes.
three years ago or whenever it was, they were contemplating for three with proximity of San Rafael. But I know that got derailed some, but I'm not current. What, what's going on?
I believe that, I believe that three out of the four licenses have been issued.
Where would they be, do you know?
They don't publish their physical location. I could find that out, but I, I, I don't know offhand.
I'd be curious if you could.
Sure.
On a fire grill, but I'd be curious at some point in time. And also there are what, 10 or 11 cities in the county, and you only mentioned a couple, so I'm assuming the others are not doing quote anything in this regard. Having said that, Mary Beth, I could tell by your expression, you have a question. So I'll call upon you if it's okay with you.
Thank you. It's just a quick question. Danielle, I'm inferring from the absence of any mention of any law enforcement activity to do with our cannabis license holders, that there have, has been none, that is law enforcement activities. And I just wanted to confirm that that was true.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other before we go to public? And Vice Mayor Collin and Councilmember Gamblin serve on the subcommittee, so thanks for doing so. Lindsay, any public comment with regard to this item?
If you are calling in and you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine now. And if you are on YouTube, please go ahead and submit your comments and don't forget to write YouTube or public comment prior to your comments and also introduce yourself. Also, for those who are virtually raising their hand on the telephone, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You will need to press star six once you hear the notification. Go right ahead if you just unmuted. We can't hear you, but you may have muted your own phone, so you'll need to unmute on your phone.
There we go. Sorry about that, you guys. Hello, Council, Mayor Phillips. Congrats, Madam Mayor Collins. It's lovely to be calling you a mayor. My name is Nurit Raphael, the founder of Ona Life San Francisco Cannabis Concierge. I'd like to start by thanking the city for everything you guys have done for the cannabis industry. And as always, Danielle, for doing such an incredible job explaining where we currently are and where we will be going. Allowing the current licenses to become what's vertically integrated is an incredible thing to be doing and will only make us stronger. So thank you. I stand behind adopting the proposed regulations with modifications to the delivery license amount. I believe that opening the delivery licenses will oversaturate the market and we currently are battling with other deliveries coming into our area from San Francisco, Oakland and other areas. We see them advertising in Marin Magazine and other local publications. And also we're seeing that Nevada is going to be doing an unlimited amount and Sausalito has been talking about it. I was just on their city conference, or city call last week. You know, we've been pushing people to shop local, but it can be very hard. I however would say if you do allow more delivery licenses, I would beg you to reconsider lowering the 4% tax as it's been pretty brutal for us to keep up with, which would only allow us to thrive. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any others, Larry, Lindsay?
I see no comments on YouTube and I'm seeing no other comments on the telephone.
Which case we'll close public comment and come back for further questions or a motion with regard to this item.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please.
So I thank Nurit for calling in. She has given great input, I know, to our program and having it be developed. So her comment about the lowering the 4% tax lowering, I know that's not on the agenda. But Danielle, could you speak to like what that would look like? Are other jurisdictions, do they have a lower tax rate? I mean, we already know this is no longer a pilot, but we're going to continue to evolve the program as this industry becomes more, I guess, mainstream and established. But maybe you could just add it. I know we'll get into it deeper at another time, but.
Sure, sure. I would, I would want to come back with better comps for what's around us, but for example, Cotati, which is just up north from us, that has a cannabis community is around 3%. We're at 4. that has a cannabis community is around three percent. We're at four. Emeryville is at four percent. Uh City of San Francisco has talked about, uh you know, either reducing or temporarily suspending to help businesses. So there's, there are communities up and down the state looking at their tax rates and making adjustments. That's not unusual. And we are allowed to set our tax rate, council is, by resolution every two years. So we're within that window.
We are within that window.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now that was the only question. I don't know if there are other questions. I'm I'm happy to make.
Uh I see no others, so why don't you go ahead with the motion?
Say that now after that, I have to, I have to scan to where the, okay, sorry. What's the problem with everything being on the same computer? Um hold on, hold on, look at the exact wording. Here we go. Okay. Um I Hold on. Okay, here we go. Here we go. Thank you. Um I move that we uh, oh, adopt the resolution. I could have just said that. Uh but amending and renaming the cannabis business operator license pilot program and as well as restating it in its entirety.
And second. And moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Councilmember McCullough.
Hi.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries five zero will now turn to item C, a city's response to the grand jury report on adopting climate change. And Corey, that must be you.
That would be me.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. This is my first Zoom
Likewise.
council meeting, so. This item is to review and approve the draft response to the Marin grand jury report entitled Climate Change: How Will Marin Adapt? I'll give you a brief overview of the responses and some of the items in the staff report, then you can ask questions and open up for public comment if you'd like. So generally, can you hear me okay? Okay.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Generally, we appreciate the grand jury bringing this up. Uh this is something we've been talking around, talking about around the county for a while. Around the bay, around the region, people are talking about this. And it's an excellent report, well-written, well-researched, some really great recommendations, um very thoughtful. I wanna just preface by saying I'm no expert on all aspects of climate change adaptation. It's a very vast subject with a lot of factors inherent, different types of threats and vulnerabilities and skill sets, flooding, fire, public health. It's just really vast. Um but one of the things in our climate action plan, two-year priorities, it's a year and a half since we adopted our quote unquote new climate action plan, was to identify funding and conduct adaptation planning processes. So we basically made a commitment in the climate action plan. Um so for the past year, I've been working with the county, D P W, Paul and planning. Um around the region, we joined the Bay Area Climate Adaptation Network. We've been working with B C D C to try to understand it a little better and try to figure out what is the best way forward for San Rafael. Um and one thing that's come out of all these regional meetings is that everybody wants to figure this out and nobody's quite figured it out yet. So generally, we agree with a lot of the findings and recommendations. So I'll go over some of the things that we said that we disagreed with partially as well. So findings F one, basically asking that mitigation efforts have been notably effective in meeting greenhouse gas reduction goals, or stating that. We'd like to say absolutely, it has been, and it's the early, the low hanging fruit. It's the easier part. Now it's gonna be harder work. Um and as you've heard me say before, I like to always ask, have you ever reduced anything in your life by forty percent? It's not gonna be easy. So we're gonna have to be very creative, very innovative. We're gonna have to work collaboratively. And we're gonna have to redouble our emissions in terms of emissions reductions. Finding F four, existing adaptation efforts, basically they say pay insufficient attention to the other potential effects of climate change, including ecosystems, public health, social equity. So this is one that we said partially disagree. Um and emphasis on the word partially. There's a lot going along, going on around the county. There's a lot in terms of sea level rise. Of course, there's the Marin Wildfire Protection Authority, our local hazard mitigation plan, which is countywide coordination. You know, the the report addresses some of these and speaks to some of these. Um there are several ecosystem pilots around the county, two of which are right here in San Rafael off the Spinnaker Lagoon. Uh there's our work in the general plan, which also has the um diversity, equity and inclusion element. And then most recently, I wanted to highlight that we've been working with the county for the past year. The county and city have been trying to figure out how we move from ad- from assessment to adaptation with the Bay Wave project around sea level rise and flooding. And so we've been looking for opportunities to partner together, and we just recently on Thursday submitted a grant application together to the Ocean Protection Council through Prop sixty-eight Grant Fund. And um what we wanted to do is sort of ground the work in social equity and start with the canal neighborhood, which is being shown as one of the most impacted areas in the whole Bay Area, Bay Area with the first twelve inches of sea level rise. San Rafael, our town is the most impacted. And so we reached out to the Canal Alliance and Multicultural Center Marin, and together we developed a project and a proposal that we turned in on Thursday. It's a very highly competitive grant. Um nevertheless, we feel very good about it and very strong about it, and it really centers it in social equity. But at the same time, what it does is it acknowledges that we need to include everybody. We need to work with Spinnaker and Bay Point, the East San Rafael Working Group. We need to work with the adjacent commercial district and come up with a vision and a set of priorities we can all agree on to prioritize for adaptation planning in the area. So partially disagree with that one. Finding seven, Marin lacks basically any overarching organizational or governance structure to facilitate cross-jurisdictional collaboration and coordination. Another partially disagree, emphasis on the word partially. Again, a lot of the things we've talked about before, Bay Wave, the Wildfire Protection Authority, uh planning managers have been meeting to grapple with state um requirements around adaptation planning and and environmental justice and making sure that those are included in planning efforts, the local hazard mitigation plan. It's not holistic with regard to climate impacts, but it's unclear that that's the best framing. Climate is one way to frame hazards, but there are lots of different types of hazards. Um does it make sense to not think about earthquakes when you're planning for hazards? Are you planning for adaptation planning? So it may be that that's the way forward. It may be that it's better to look at things like the Wildfire Protection Authority and the Bay Wave project and coordinating around sea level rise. And then to kind of stitching that together, finding some way to coordinate all those efforts. And in terms of the recommendations, recommendation one, asks that the board of supervisors and local governments basically convene a multi-jurisdictional task force to develop a single comprehensive, multi-jurisdictional adaptation strategy for all of Marin. There are a wide variety of potential threats. It's going to require in some cases no less than a complete reimagining of our community and how we live, work and play. Sea level rise and flooding alone touch on so many different types of stakeholders and regulations. Agencies, landowners, types of experience, it's daunting enough to try to get all those people together in a room and come up with an agreement to add all the types of climate impacts. I'm thinking about sort of like smoke and sea level rise. You know, just piecing those together, it just seems like perhaps that starting a new county department, that's an overarching department, might be something we wanna look into a little bit more. So the recommendation is that we do further analysis. Um we'll continue to work with the county, um regional working groups, even work with the M C C M C Subcommittee on Climate Change and try to figure out what would be an effective and efficient way forward to coordinate and collaborate. And what I'm proposing is that in May, again, to your anniversary of our climate action plan, I'd like to come back with our two-year priorities and report on those. We'll have our new greenhouse gas inventory at the time. And at that time, come back as well. That's around the time of adopting the draft general plan to a general plan twenty forty with some recommendations and some thoughts about how we might coordinate better at that point. And that'll give us time to work with the county and all the jurisdictions.
Okay.
And recommendation four is each member of the Marin Climate Energy Partnership should declare support for M C E P in broadening the mission, increasing funding to support mitigation and adaptation. I wanna say that M C E P has been great. We also put further and requires further analysis. There is a lot of different organizations, a lot of different efforts coordinating around the county right now, again, Bay Wave, the Wildfire Protection Authority, all that, and there's Drawdown Marin as well. It makes sense to figure out what is the best role for M C E P. But M C E P works really well because it's a small group of staff from all the different jurisdictions that have a pretty focused effort. And um and it's again a small working group, so we can be pretty efficient as well. So again, another thing that I think would be interesting to explore and all the members of M C P, I believe, we did talk to a lot of the other jurisdictions and the county before writing this um this report. And there are some minor differences between different jurisdictions, but all all told, people agree that we should explore these these things together. And then the last one, recommendation six, each city without a full-time sustainability coordinator should appoint a committee or commission. Well, you got me, whether you like it or not, and we also have the community. Um we do these climate action plan quarterly meetings. We rely on the community. In a lot of cases, there's subject matter experts that we rely on. And again, with a forty percent reduction, we don't get anywhere unless we work with the community uh really well. So that collaboration is essential and very valuable. Um and then you saw the M C A N letter that was attached in the staff report, and you probably saw the letter that came in as well from Bill Carney just recently. Basically, uh generalizing but agreeing with the responses and appreciating the responses. I wanted to mention two things about the M C A N letter and just that we fully support Drawdown Marin. And Drawdown Marin is very supportive of our efforts as well, um and actually endorsed um one of the projects that we put forward. And then we fully intend to engage the business community. That's why the climate action plan was really developed consciously with the three pillars of um of sustainable development, economy, equity and environment. And everything that we bring forward, we wanna make sure we review through those lenses. So we're working hard on adaptation planning. If you'd like, you can look at our new adaptation webpages, cityofsanfil.org slash adaptation and give some feedback on them if you'd like to. They're iterative. They're just uh put up, they're sort of drafts and we're looking for some feedback and then we'll continue to grow them and um and adjust them over time. So at this point, I'm available for questions and public comment and all that good stuff.
Well, first, Corey, uh thanks, thanks very much for your report this evening and then uh the report to us. Uh very comprehensive and well thought out. Uh I think we're all, I'll feel we're very, very fortunate to have you at the helm of our effort to push this through because you're such a thoughtful and considerate individual. So thanks for, thanks for everything you do in this, in this critical area. So we greatly appreciate your your efforts. Uh I'll ask for a comment, uh Vice Mayor Colin.
Yeah, I'd love to comment, and I echo what the mayor's uh just said about Corey. I mean, he is a gem and unique among all the jurisdictions uh in Marin County and really um is instrumental in this kind of cross jurisdiction, cross-agency conversation. He has an excellent relationship with Chris Chu over at the county and the the two of them really are, I won't say single-handedly because we're all in this together, but really keeps advancing um the conversation forward. So the only comments I wanted to make was again to thank you for whipping this out. I know when the grand jury uh gives a report, we have to turn around a response very quickly. Um I do know that there's been a lot of conversation um among the jurisdictions of of about this. Um I am a member of Bay Wave representing San Rafael. Um and that has uh county people and it has other cities. Um and we've talked about that whole format and that whole, you know, do we make this more formalized? And if you think about it, sometimes it's really great to have a formal structure and sometimes informal works better. And to Corey's point, I just wanna underscore it, there's so many different areas of climate adaptation and mitigation. There's so much going on and so many different groups that I really think Marin has done a great job of having the links. Often it's Corey, you know, and Chris Chu kind of linking the different groups together. So I think right now that conversation is going well. The county has continued to show leadership and we're really grateful from Drawdown, the vulnerability assessment. And I would look forward to a future conversation of having the county continue to really try to bring all the jurisdictions along in that kind of broad conversation. Right now, though, it's continuing, continuing to really evolve. I wanna say organically. I wanna try to throw an environmental joke in there, but I couldn't think of it. But it's growing organically the way it should. Um and finally, I I also wanna give a a shout out to our community partners, Canal Alliance, Multicultural Center Marin, Sustainable San Rafael, Sustainable Marin. They're all really key to all of the work that's being done and for the expertise that is there. Um in terms of the cross jurisdiction, one and Corey did mention it, M C C M C does have a committee. And uh we really, when we met last time, we were talking, we actually, to be honest, need to up our game. So that conversation and that informal, um that informal structure continues to be consistent and go forward. So I I think that because of the grand jury report, it was that little nudge, so that conversation will also be taking place. So I'm in full uh support of the recommendations that and and the conclusions that Corey um put together for us. And I just wanted to again thank him. We are so fortunate to have all the work that you do. And it is why San Rafael continues to lead in the climate space and to be a great role model for our community. So thank you, Corey. Thank you, Mayor.
And I thank you for your comment. Uh let's turn to the public comment at this point. Any?
Yes, there is. If you are participating by telephone, please, please go ahead and press star nine now. You'll need to press star six once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to participate. Also, if you're watching on YouTube, please go ahead and submit your comments now and don't forget to write public comment in advance of your comments and introduce yourself. I do have a caller. I'm going to ask to unmute.
Hi, good evening. This is uh Bill Carney. And um indeed, Sustainable San Rafael does support the city's further analysis of the um grand jury's recommended countywide task force um on climate resilience. Uh and also strengthening the um Marin Climate and Energy Partnership. And we're confident that this analysis will lead to greater collaboration uh and effectiveness of climate actions throughout Marin. Um we also appreciate um the thoughtful consideration given in the staff report to the recommendations of Marin Climate Action Network. I just wanna stress three key points uh that uh were in the staff report and in that um in that reaction. Number one, um continuing to reduce greenhouse gas emissions is absolutely critical to reducing climate impacts. Um that simply means that climate mitigation is an essential part of quote climate adaptation. Um without solving the root causes of climate change, our leverage will never be high enough. Um our reservoir is deep enough or our homes hardened enough to resist the intensifying floods, uh drought, wildfires and other climate disasters that we're only now beginning to experience. Uh number two, Drawdown Marin does offer a comprehensive countywide framework for reaching net zero greenhouse gas emissions. Uh its strategic plan uh is at the Board of Supervisors um about three weeks from now and provides the roadmap of practical goals and solutions along with an inclusive governing body of public and community partners uh working countywide. Um and in third, we have, as the report uh points out, effective models both organizationally and fiscally for confronting the climate crisis. Um the recent measures uh funding the Bay Restoration Authority and the Wild Fire Prevention Authority um uh backed up ideas like the quote countywide joint powers authority to oversee adaptation planning, which is suggested in San Rafael's draft general plan uh twenty forty um and other uh uh proposals from Drawdown Marin. So any such measure uh measures will need to include funds again for both greenhouse gas reduction mitigation and resilience adaptation. The two go um hand in hand. So thanks very much for confirming the city's commitment to effective and collaborative and comprehensive climate action.
Thank you, Bill, and thanks for all your your efforts in this area. Uh it's truly outstanding. Any other comments?
Yes. I do have a comment on YouTube from Hamler Reeves. All staff in Marin County, especially Corey, are dedicated and fantastic. Who though has authority to take needed action? Is this incredible staff able to take action? And that concludes public comment.
So we shall return uh to council for follow-up questions or points. Anyone, anything? Then let's have a motion with regard to this resolution.
I would be delighted to move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Okay. We need to execute that whatever we're doing. Okay, moved in second. Those in favor? Uh Lindsay?
Councilmember Bushy.
Bye.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Councilmember McCullough.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
I matter carries five zero. Thanks again, Corey, for everything.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
You're terrific. Let's then uh draw a conclusion. Uh councilmember reports request for future items. Uh anyone have anything? Well, I do have one. As you know, we've had a uh annual review of our city manager. Uh I think it's fair to say it was outstanding. Uh there was one segment think it's fair to say it was outstanding. There was one segment that was not concluded and that is the compensation. And therefore, I'm going to propose we have a special meeting this Thursday at 7:30 to address the compensation issue. And I would hope that there would be one other member that would join me at least in addressing, having us address this next Thursday, excuse me, this Thursday at 7:30.
AM or PM, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. PM. Thank you. Is there anyone that's interested in doing this?
To be clear, Mr. Mayor, are you asking for one other person to join you at the meeting or for one other person to join your proposal to agendize the matter at a meeting?
The latter. I thought was clear, but perhaps not.
So, thanks to Rob for the clarification. If the request by the mayor is that we put this matter on the city council's agenda and that we do so by way of a meeting on Thursday, other than a scheduling issue on my end, I'm supportive of the idea.
And thank you very much. We'll do that. What is, if I could inquire, what is the conflict? Is there some way we can work around that? So, you can attend. Zoom meeting, by the way.
My, my last MCE, Marin Clean Energy Board meeting is that evening, although they've had a history of canceling relatively late in the day. So, it's possible this meeting will be canceled, but I don't know for certain.
Okay, then we'll do it. I don't want to push it off to Thanksgiving week and beyond that, quite frankly, because we've just, I just sat down with your input, your collective input by way of evaluation of Jim Schultz, our city manager today, as you all know. And I think it goes hand in hand with that and therefore I think we need to do it rather, rather soon. Let me, let me make this more difficult for everybody. How would, would Wednesday be better? I mean, I'm not hard and fast on the Thursday date. It just seemed like it was before Friday.
At the risk of being the stick in the mud, Wednesday is actually worse for me. But, but that said, Mayor, between my duties to MCE and my sense of the importance of this, people have been known to miss MCE board meetings before. It's a very, very large board with meetings that while they have a high turnout, we're talking in the dozens of people at each meeting. So, I would miss the meeting for this or at least miss the first part of it in order to attend this city council meeting.
Well, that's okay. That settles that then. Everybody else okay Thursday? Okay, then Lindsay, will our city clerk will make the necessary announcements since it will be a public meeting. And we will do that. That is the review of our city manager's compensation this Thursday at 7:30 PM by way of Zoom. Okay. With that successor agency, no, no, no action there. And therefore, unless there are follow-up comments, we shall adjourn. Okay, there you go. Thanks.
Everyone.
Have a nice evening.